Okay, it is 6:30, so I'm calling you to order the state president's.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Lori Matthews here, Hallie from the Department of Health, and she has a presentation for the town. So Lori, if you want to come up and explain what it is.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Come on up. Where's my Steve? Come here. So I have two staff here with me. Steve. And so, my name is Lori Matthews. I'm the section chief for the drinking water section within the State Department of Public Health. I come representing the Commissioner Renee Coleman Mitchell, who's a new Commissioner as of April 1st, and Deputy Commissioner Heather Aaron. On behalf of the Department of Public Health, the State Department of Public Health would like to award 2019 Small Community Public Water System Merit Award to the town of Paton. On behalf of the Department of Public Health, we wish to thank you for all of your work and support of public health in providing significant drinking water to people in need. It's a very significant project that has moved forward. And from our department, my staff who's here, Vic Carrier, who's an engineer, regional engineer, a senior level engineer within our section, and Steve Waller, who's an engineer, who's worked with us for many years on problem water systems and getting portable, drinkable, safe, and clean water to people every day is our job. And your work at the rural level in your town and for the people in the town of Paton has been significant. So that's why this year, we offer this award to you. From my Commissioner, to my Deputy Commissioner, from myself as section chief, and the 50 people within the drinking water section, this award is well deserved.
Thank you very much. Health and deep was a tough process, but a good process. So we did a lot of work. We all rolled our sleeves up to make sure clean water came to Tylerville. So I want to thank you and everything that you did, Victor, all the endless emails, and everything went back and forth to try to make this happen. So we could get one, so we don't have to put it up on the town. Don't hide. Don't hide.
You're all there, right?
Awesome. All right, and I did you first, so that you can have all the extra stuff.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Take care. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Really do appreciate it. Okay, so next is public comments.
I'm here to make a look.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. I am so sorry.
Okay, well, I know I'm whiter than the input. I'm here, as usual, because Melissa still feels that she doesn't have to render the proper pledge to the Pledge of the Flag. And it's usually just been her insulted by something, and she's insulting me as a bedroom by not properly. But on the weekend of May 27th, we had a very special weekend. It was Memorial Day weekend. It was the weekend to recognize all those who can't be here anymore. And all those white crosses in France. When she's kneeling, she's disrespecting all those veterans that faced such a terrible, terrible war and fought so hard. But at the same time, she doesn't feel like it's important enough to stand and salute the flag properly. So it bothers me more this weekend. I'll get over that, but those men in that field never will. They died, and if people don't start respecting them, they might have died in vain. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Yes.
The vote on the school went yes, you want to buy it. So when will this process begin?
I actually have an update on that. It's part of the agenda. The attorneys are actually working on it now, but I'll give you a much more lengthy detail when we get there. Yes.
Young parent, how's that? What's the status for the roads to be done over there?
Chris, the contractor's lined up, but I don't know if he's been out on any surgery. So I sent an email on Friday for an update, and it has not gotten back to me yet. Anyone else? I know it's soon. I just don't know when.
I'm going to add my comment here because it's more pertinent now after Lori Matthews' presentation. I just want to make a comment for the record that thanks to people like Eileen Daly, Phil Miller, Paul DiStefano, DPH obviously, and also the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, who actually funded this project. And if it wasn't for all those people before us, this project would have never gotten done because we've all been begging for the state to fund this. And the biggest thanks go to the Connecticut taxpayer who actually funded this project. It's a project that was meant to be for the polluter. The polluter has gotten away with polluting the entire Tylerville area. So thank you, Connecticut taxpayer, for cleaning up a polluter's mess.
Anyone else? So now we have approval of the minutes for May 18th. Motion to accept minutes.
April 18, you mean?
April 18, yes, sorry.
One change. I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
Yep. On the third page, under approve additional roads for bonding, it should be Agu Springs, not Arku.
Any other corrections? Hearing on all those in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Stain. Okay, April 15th. We're going to approve the minutes for April 15th.
Make that motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, a couple things here. Under update on Hattam Elementary School and Swan Hill property, I think we should clarify, it just says Swan Hill is going to be given directly to the Hattam Land Trust. I believe we should clarify that and just say it's the Regional District 17 that is going to give the property to the land trust. As it states now, it sounds kind of like Hattam is giving it to them. And then where it says, Madge, you made a motion to send the following question to referendum, I think we should also add in the notes that we had, that discussion about the payments that they are not starting. I know the motion you have correct here after we changed it that day, but I think we should clarify that it's payments over three years, not starting until July 1st.
All right. Well, that was voted on at the referendum, and I don't remember what was said or not that day. So I'm going to say because the legal notice was correct and how it was voted on at the referendum was correct, I don't see the need to add that in at that point.
It's just for history's sake.
I get that, but I don't remember if that was discussed at that point or not.
It's on video. You can find it online.
And I can't go in favor of that. As far as the Regional District giving it to the land trust, that's fine. That is what happened. But I don't know if at that point in time back in April, that was the case. So.
You're unclear of what was the case?
Of how the payments were going to be made at that time, if that was agreed upon.
Yes, it was.
Again, Melissa, I don't know that, and it's already recorded somewhere else. So that point is in the historical data for the term, for the minutes. So I'm going to say, you know, that's, it's fine because we are covered by how that's going to be done.
Okay. Next change, two paragraphs down after the motion, my name is misspelled. And then in that same paragraph, it should be carrying costs, not carrying costs. And that's it for that.
So other than the two typos and adding Regional District, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Stain. Okay. May 28th. Motion to approve these minutes.
Make that motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll state this, although I was not at that meeting. It's a general comment about the special meetings. When a meeting has been changed from our regular time, it really should be in the evening, and it should have public comments. In all fairness to the public and the taxpayers in Hattam, they don't have a lot of opportunity to comment, especially since the meetings have been moved to once a month. So that's my suggestion. I've made it before. I'll continue to make it. Thank you.
There's plenty of meetings that meet during the day. And I'll see a reason it was an issue to get Northern Tree Service going because we have to go in to the dam from June 1st. And if we had waited until this meeting, it wouldn't have happened. And unfortunately, due to my father's passing, we had to cancel and move the meeting. So again, we only have special meetings during the day. People still came to that meeting. And again, with the attendance to the Board of Selectment meetings, I think it gives the public the opportunity to come to different meetings when need be.
Then at least add public comments. That would be helpful.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Stain. Stain. We have tax refunds. We just have a few. For personal property, $298.88. And for motor vehicle, $31.05, for a total of $329.93. So if I can have a motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So we have some resignations. We have one for David Flegg from the Hattam Park and Rec Association for April 12th, effective April 12th. We were already all copied in previously, but the letter to the town clerk, David's resigning from that commission. Lori Madge is resigning from economic development effective May 8th. And Tracy Thompson, who is our Assistant Town Clerk, has accepted a full-time position in the town of Portland, and she will start that position on June 16th.
Before we move on from resignations, this is something that the FOI Commission requests on an agenda that there be details for resignations and appointments. You should say tax collector assistant and EDC member. And same with appointments.
Well, I'm going to do the revision to the appointments, but when somebody resigns, you know, some of these I knew were coming and some didn't. And again, with Joanne and I trying to work our schedules together, due to a death in her family, this is the best we can do. We'll make a revision for appointments to include, I didn't have all the paperwork, a lot of it, until today. So we can make a revision under appointments to include inland wetlands, conservation, and senior van driver. So a motion to approve that for detail under appointments.
Did you say Conservation Commission too?
I did. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Gail Reynolds. We'll start with wetlands commission, inland wetlands. Gail needs to be reappointed. Her term is going to expire, oh, it did expire May 1st of 2019. That's a three-year appointment. So the motion to approve Gail Reynolds to inland wetlands.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then I have, excuse me. Another appointment for Paul Bass, Jeremy DeCarly, and Joe Stevens. Full members, date cost alternate member, whose terms expire May 1st of 2018, to reappointed for a term of another three years. A motion to approve that.
And just to clarify, three years from 2018?
Correct. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then for Conservation Commission, Walter Bragoni and Tom Wardley, their terms expired on May 1st of 2018. And your reappointment for three years starting on May 2018 to May of 2021, or actually the April 30th of 2021. Have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Before we move on to the appointment, is there a way that Joanne can keep track of this a little bit more detail?
It's up to the Secretary of the Commission to do it, Bunny didn't catch it.
This is something that Alice always had a special thought.
It's not how it's done. The Secretaries to those commissions always let us know what's happening. And Bunny always lets me know on her commissions. It's just something that she missed. Okay. And then I have a letter from Chris Corsa recommending to hire Wayne Ruddy to be the Hattam Senior Van Driver. The position will be 20 to 25 hours a week, effective tomorrow, at a rate of $17.50 an hour. Motion to approve. Any discussion?
Yeah, question. You originally had this position posted for 10 hours a week. You just got rid of somebody who was at 30 hours. So I'm curious.
There's been a significant increase in people wanting for medicals. A lot of people, from what I'm hearing, have been told no previously. And now that they know they can be taken to doctor's appointments, it has increased significantly, which is why it's 20 to 25 hours a week and not full-time. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Before we move on from appointments, I'd like to just make a note for the record that when you go out and/or discuss hiring for Kristin Battistoni, the tactical assistant, that we only hire for just during the busy times. Like all other towns our size and larger, they do not have a full-time position as assistant.
It's not a full-time, it's a part-time.
All right, part-time, sorry.
And it's a union position, so we would have to negotiate with the union.
Yes.
Under old business, so Hattam Elementary update. So to your point earlier, the town approved Purchase Hattam Elementary School last Tuesday. The town is until October to complete the transfer. The Board of Finance, obviously, they're going to know about it. It'll be on the agenda to discuss how they're going to pay for it over the next three years. We've asked Howard Theory, because Mike DiStefano is out on medical leave and is actually retiring, to send us, identify what work is done with the building. So what's the roof? Where's the boiler? Where are all these things so that we can do our due diligence? We're also in the process of doing a survey, so we know where those borders are, so that we're set on that. So this is something that's going to take a while to determine. It's not something that we're going to rush. So town planner, speaking to him, unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. There's some things that we might need to be able to get health approvals for, Legislative Actions Board. So he will be looking into that, and we'll start to set up some public hearings and ideas on things to do as we get closer to the date. But right now, we don't own the property, so until that's finalized, we're just going to complete it until the transaction is done. And then we'll make decisions as to what to do with it next. So, and some new business. We need to approve the Butterfly Five K-Walk. It's on Sunday, August 18th, from 10 to 2. They've done this previously. They're not closing roads or anything like that. So they just have a motion to approve the walk for August 18th. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I want more for the Summer Breeze. Similar, it's a charity ride at the Mookford J.C.'s. It's a cycling event. It's on, for autism. It is on Sunday, July 21st. Same thing, there's no roads. It will be closed. And they just need permission to use the highways and roads so we can sign off. So if I can have a motion, make that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, McTire Road. We had to go out for engineering on McTire Road due to all of the water issues that we had on Phase 1 with the natural spring. Even though the town had thought that they would put the drainage in, it's a little bit more complicated job to do. This was already broken out, sorry, for funding. We had bids. Jacobson did the engineering. Both did the bid opening. They did their due diligence. I received a letter at about 2:30 today from Jacobson after completing their due diligence to award the contract to Herbert E. Butler Construction Company from Portland for $517,250. So I have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor? So since the bonding was approved with the budget, when we voted at the town meeting, we actually need to do a bond ordinance resolution to file with the town clerk. And we need to have a public hearing for that, and we need to have a town meeting for that. We also need, and combining like the next three bullet points, we also need to have a town meeting for some transfers over from operating to the... I almost skipped something. Sorry. Oh, me back up. Sorry. I need water. I'm going to cough. I apologize. Center cold is not fun. I skipped a ward of Reval Services, so I apologize. We got in bids. We got in three bids for Reval Services. And Tammy Anderson, who is our tax assessor, and Deb, who is our assistant, who was a tax assessor, along with Barbara Bertrand and myself, went through the bids. Debbie actually went down to Chester to look at the software that is being used for the Reval. The three bids that came in. The low giver.
Still on the letter from Tammy.
Yeah, I know. And I'm supposed to have it in here. It doesn't look like you're going to put it in my paper. Here we go. Yeah, I got it just out of order. All right, so for the 2020 Revals, there were three bids that came in. Equality for $130,000. Tyler Technologies for $189.5. And Vision for $190,982. They went through all of the bids. There were some software upgrades that were going to need to be done with Vision that were going to be an additional $25,000 that we had budgeted for capital. Because we are not going with Vision, the software upgrades are included in the Equality bid. In addition, Equality ties in with Municity, which is something that the town uses for building permits. So we'll have some efficiencies there. So overall, with checking the references, Equality also does work for us so they don't have to do double entry. And every night Tammy has to bridge the data. And now she won't have to do that because it'll all be in the same software system. So it'll also be more efficient. So the recommendation from the tax assessor is to go with Equality for $130,000. A motion to approve. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, just one quick note, I think that needs to be in the minutes, is that when I read through these bids, unfortunately, we always get in on Friday, the documents for the meeting, so I couldn't come in on Friday. We get it entered by 11:30, half hour before town hall closes. So I went in today to look at the actual bid responses because there's an asterisk here, Equality will only perform reevaluation on Equality software. And it goes on to say charges come after the red list. So I asked Tammy about that, and it will be an additional $15,000 to $20,000 above the $130,000. So technically, it's around $145,000, $150,000. I'm still in favor of Equality after talking to Tammy for a while. I just want to clarify that it will be an additional fee.
There's also additional fees from Vision and the other carriers also. But when they're comparing apples to apples, it's Equality ended up being the better vendor.
Well, see, the other two, actually, this Tyler didn't even put in the hosting fees. But Vision has all that in their numbers, but there was an asterisk on Equality because they didn't have zero for hosting and all of those fees. So that will come afterwards. You get a little reprieve in the beginning, but then afterwards.
Yep. Well aware of it. We went through the process. Usually though, Melissa, the agenda goes out on Friday, so you have the weekend. We try to get as much in there as we can, so we have as much information as we can. Previously, the agendas went out the day of the meeting, and you requested that it go out earlier. So the weekend has been sufficient. We have a committee going through the process, and they make a recommendation. They're there, and all the documents are there in the town hall, and I know you came in and looked at them.
Yeah, I'm just saying that asterisk is a $15,000, $20,000 cost. That's all. So I think that should be in the oldwares.
Okay. Motion to approve Equality.
Aye.
All in favor? All right, now I had jumped ahead for the bond ordinance. So where I was off is that capital budget got approved. We now have to go back into a bond ordinance as we did before. And that needs to be filed with the town clerk. That will happen tomorrow, within 30 days. We need to set a public hearing, and we need to set a town meeting for that process. We also need to set a town meeting to transfer funds from the assessor's office that we're in operating and to capital. And we also have received an additional $225,000 grant for Scolpio for remediation. The state is actually keeping $5,000 of it, but it was not part of the budget process to spend the money. So we need to go to town meeting to spend the money on the DECT Roundfield grant. So we worked with the town clerk's office and with dates to stay away from other meetings. June 26th, which is a Wednesday, seemed to be the best date. We'll have the public hearing at 6:00, and we'll have the town meeting at 6:30. So if I can, a motion to approve. What are we approving here? So we're going to approve the ordinance resolution. And then we're setting up a public hearing. The transfers have already gone through Board of Finance. DECT has to go to Board of Finance, and I'll bring that to them on Monday night. So with Board of Finance approval to accept the $225,000, that's what we need to do, is set up a public hearing and a town meeting. So that's what we're approving.
Yeah, we need to vote on each of them separate, separately.
Is your vote going to be different on those?
What's that?
Is your vote going to be different on each of those?
There's, we have to make, yes, they all should be separate votes. I have changes for the resolution, and I have an issue with the general comment about the transfer. But I have a suggested change to the resolution.
All right, well, we're not, the attorney did the resolution. Similar to the same resolution that he did the last time. So if you want to have a vote for a motion to approve the resolution?
I will make, before we get there, I will make a motion that we add to the resolution in Section 8. The First Selectment is authorized after review and approval from the Board of Selectment to execute any, and then continue with that paragraph. I think the Board of Selectmen should be the executor of all the contracts as our charter.
This gives the First Selectmen the authority to do that.
Yeah, the authority rests with the Board of Selectmen.
It does. So this is just giving the, the Board of Selectmen has given the First Selectmen the authority to sign the documents.
To execute the contracts.
Correct, which the attorneys look over, which makes life 100% easier and saves time and gets it done in a timely manner. So Melissa, you can go any way that you want. So I'm going to...
There's a motion over.
Sure. So all in favor of making amendment to the resolution?
Aye.
Post? Nay. So I have another motion to keep the resolution as it was written by the Bond Council and was written previously. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
In general, I am not in favor of funding the capital plan with bond money. That's like putting everything on the credit card. I will have to be voting no, unfortunately.
It's fine. It's what the board of finance wanted to do, so all in favor? Aye.
Nay.
Post? All right. Okay. So now we need to set a public hearing for the bond ordinance resolution, which will be June 26, 2019. And a town meeting to follow the bond resolution. And it's, the public hearing to be at 6:00 and the town meeting to be at 6:30. Motion to approve public hearing and town meeting for just the bond resolution.
26? Make a motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Nay.
Post? Motion to approve the transfers of the operating budget of $33,073 and $5,000 for $38,073 from operating to capital. Any discussion?
Was that, that was your, that was a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. The one warning here is, and this is something that you can relate to the charter revision commission if you would like, because they unfortunately voted to not include public comments in any of their meetings. The reason to go to town meeting, they have on the bottom of this, transfer form amount is over $24,855. That stems from a charter that says anything over .3333% of the general government budget must go to a town meeting. However, now that our budget is more, it's an increase, that is now underlying and actually illegal per state law. It can't be above $20,000. So that is something that'll have to be changed since the charter revision commission has worked ahead of them.
I had the calculations, but the reason we're changing this is to be transparent, to take it out of operating and put it into capital, so it's a clean transfer. And it was confusing to do it at the time of the budget. We didn't want people to not understand what we were doing. So per recommendations from Barbara Bertrand, our finance director, and Joe Santifanti, they requested that we just do this transfer separate at the next town meeting that we have.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
That's the purpose of doing it.
Yeah, no, no, I have no problem with the transfer. I'm saying that we're going to run into problems if you try to do this again and not go to town meeting.
Why would I not go to town meeting? That's what we're doing.
On the bottom, this form that is, that is somebody set up as a boilerplate form, it says the amount is over $24,855. That point, what I'm saying is that .3333 language in our charter is illegal unless our budget goes down a million dollars.
The way that it was written in the charter was to be flexible for whenever the dollar amount changed based on the budget for that year. And the budget, that's why we're doing it before June 30th, because after July 1st, the number for next year's budget would change.
But then they need to add the language, per state statute cannot be above $20,000. So if that .333 is above $20,000, it would be illegal, hence this. So if you tried, say it was a $24,000 amount that the board of finance just said, yeah, we can transfer that, that would be an illegal transfer. So that's what I'm, I'm saying now, while we're in this discussion, that that needs to be added to the charter to clean it up and make it lawful.
All right. Any other comments on the transfer? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? And the last is the DECT grant for $200,000. Is to approve accepting the grant and spending the funds, again, per board of finance approval. And again, to have it be at the same town meeting on June 26th.
Oh, make that motion.
6:30. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any other public comment?
What creep, what, if you should be at the proposition of the wedding commission, and if you said that those members, those three full-time members and a part-time member were not members as of May 2018, there's been a lot of illegal meetings and probably also votes that were not legal if they were not members. So I'll probably check with the town attorney to see if what could be done to clarify that. Thank you.
Actually, I forgot anything. Any other public comment? Yes.
First of all, sorry for the loss of your father. I lost mine and it's, it doesn't get easier. On that summer note also, the 5K that the board of selectmen just approved to have the 5K, for those that don't know. It is for Rachel Orvendorf. She was a classmate of mine of class of '94. She moved down to the Carolinas. And I'll never, just something real quick for those that I don't know. May 5th, thank you all so much for your love and support for Rachel after a long and brave, brave fight after cancer she passed away peacefully last night. This would have been May 4th. She spent the day surrounded by family and friends and we shared all the messages from everyone to her as she was going. Rachel was so strong, she was still able to communicate her wishes for peace. I guess for those that loved her, she will continue and inspire many others in her brave strength with love of butterflies. I'm hoping that the board of selectmen hopefully can go to that. Her husband will be coming up with the boys this year. Unfortunately, the past two years they couldn't because of her treatments at Duke University. And I'm also going to ask, you know, board of ed members to show up. She was a very good classmate, a well, well representative of the H.K. community that moved us. So hopefully it could be a very fulfilling day that day.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to forward that to Joanne, I can have her make it be part of the record.
Good.
Okay. I did forget something under town meeting.
I have a question.
Yes.
In regards to Hatton Elementary School.
Run the buzzer.
Are you going to have a commission or a committee? I missed that part.
The town planner's working on what the process is going to be. We just, we haven't even gotten to the purchasing the property, which probably won't be till October. So we're just still trying to figure out what we're going to do. There was something that I forgot to add in. I mean, need to set to, set to town meeting. There was a piece of property that we took in a tax sale for Boulder Dell Road that was never accepted at a town meeting. And we need to add that. I started going through property that was accepted, that went into open space. I wasn't aware that I had a meeting with Bill Conlon and he was asking about that piece of property. I guess the transfer happened in 2013 or 14, I'm not sure. And we never went to town meeting to accept it, so we need to add that on.
What is the slide of the project?
I don't remember. Melissa, you might know more about it. It's already, it's a done deal, but it needs to be cleaned up for the record.
Is the intention to, well, I'll make that motion. Is it the intention of the town to give this to the land trust?
It's been discussed, but until the town accepts the property, we can't really have that discussion. So I need to clean that up. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay. Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.